Good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Defoe?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Libbit?
Present.
Mr. Havas? Madam Chair, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we will move into our public hearing. For those of you that haven't joined us before, I'll just briefly describe how we conduct business. We'll call each case by the case number. The city will read a brief description of the case. We ask you, as the appellant, to step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There's also a sign-in sheet, if you could sign in for us as well, and then describe to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add anything else factual at that time. Then the city will give a recommendation, and then we will turn it over to public comment on that case. So if you're here to speak on public comment, that would be your opportunity to step forward on that case. Then we'll turn it over to the board to discuss. We do ask the appellant to just stay at the podium because we may have questions for you, and then we'll make a decision and then move on to the next case. So you're also welcome to leave after your case is called, or you're welcome to stay as well. All right, so will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case number 23-07. The appellant, Yanni and Nakama Klein, owners, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver to modify zoning board of appeals, case number ZBA 22-30. The property is located on the south side of Alta Vista Drive between Woodville Place and Lathir Boulevard at 17093 Alta Vista Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2424-329-011, zoned R2, single-family residential. This appeals to Chapter 45, Article 22, Sections 5.193, Schedule of Regulations, more commonly known as zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Zach Ostroff, and I worked on the plans. Address is 2640 Water Oaks Drive, West Bloomfield, 48324. And essentially, we were in the zoning board, I believe it was November, December last year, for the same case.
Can you make sure you're speaking into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were in the, we were November, December here for the same case. We wanted to make it a little bit bigger. My client has had a new baby since, since our last meeting, and essentially, a lot of the space is going to be devoted to another bedroom for his kids. We meet all the other setbacks. We're just asking for a little bit more on the lot coverage, and I, if I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, thank you.
Jody, excuse me for a minute. So through the chair to the board. We don't have Mr. Ostroff as the appellant for this case. It was submitted by the homeowner, so we'll need, are they here?
He's here. The owners are here.
Okay, go ahead.
Never mind.
Okay, thank you. All right, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact, case 23-07. The appellant, Yanni and Nakama Klein, owners, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver to modify zoning board of appeals, case 22-30. The property is located on the, I'm sorry, that's the wrong case number. It's 23-07. The property is located along the south Alta Vista Drive between Woodville Place and Lathir Boulevard. It's 17093 Alta Vista Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2424-329-011, zoned R2, single-family. The appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 22, Section 5.193, Schedule of Regulations, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned R2, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Sherwood Village sub. Field inspections of the surrounding area reveal the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly one-story, single-family dwellings with a few two-story mixed in. The exteriors are made of mostly brick siding. Most of the homes in the area have attached garages. The construction of surrounding properties range from 1,400 square feet to 2,500 square feet. Surrounding properties are mostly conforming with lot size setback and lot coverage requirements. The subject property was built in 1961. It's a 2,375-square-foot ranch, single-family residence with an attached 506-square-foot, two-car garage on a full basement, and is a legal non-conforming residence. The appellant proposes to increase the one-story, 233-square-foot addition on the east side of the residence, approved as per ZBA case 22-30, to a 616-square-foot addition. This addition is a 3.13 percent to the approved lot coverage as per the ZBA 22-30. The total lot coverage proposed is 32.65 percent. The total lot coverage approved as per ZBA 22-30 was 29.53 percent, and allowed, allowed is 25 percent.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
The only other thing I'd like to say is that my client's shown a lot of those neighbors. He's on a corner, so it doesn't really, what we're doing, it doesn't really affect anybody. He doesn't have any neighbors adjacent to the, the narrow portion of the addition on the east side that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
The staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following amendment: a 3.13 percent increase in lot coverage, total 32.65 percent total lot coverage proposed, 25 percent allowed, with the following conditions. The appellant secures all required permits and clearances to construct a new addition to a residence in the city of Southfield. The new addition meets the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Code. This recommendation is based on the following: due to the existing legal non-conforming residence on the parcel, the strict application of the ordinance would result in impractical difficulties and hardship to the owner, and would not impair the intent or purpose of the ordinance. The other would be the request amendment for lot coverage is minor in nature and would not have an adverse effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to public comment on this case now. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this case? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Libbit?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
I don't have a problem with the additional lot coverage.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it either.
Okay, I agree. It's a minor request, and I think now is the time to make the change while we're in the middle of the project. So, um, let's see. Ms. Libbit, would you make a motion for us?
Sure. Regarding case number 23-09, the appellant is Yanni and Nakama Klein, owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver to modify zoning board of appeals, case 2230. The property is located on the south side of Alta Vista Drive between Woodville Place and Lathir Boulevard at 17093 Alta Vista Drive, Sidwell Parcel, number 24-24-329-011, zoned R2, single-family. I move the approval of a waiver of 13.3 point 13 percent increase in lot coverage, 32.65 percent total lot coverage proposed, 25 percent allowed, with the following conditions. The appellant secures all the required permits and clearance to, to construct a new addition to a residence in the city of Southfield. The new addition meets the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Code. This recommendation is based on the following: due to the existing legal non-conforming residence on the parcel, the strict application of the ordinance would result in impractical difficulties and hardship to the owner, and would not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. The requested amendment for lot coverage is minor in nature, and would not have an adverse effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
Zoning Board of Appeals, case 23-06. The appellant, Sarah Toccolino, represents the owner, Galleria Office Center LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: a waiver of a temporary wall sign, 640 square feet, proposed 50 square feet allowed. The property is located on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Case Avenue and Lockdale Street at 200 Galleria Office Center, Sidwell Parcel, 24-17-176008, zoned RC Regional Center. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 4, Section 8.51, Paragraph 1D, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Well, hello. How are you all?
Good. You could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Of course. My name is Sarah Toccolino. I'm with Friedman Real Estate. Our address is 200 Galleria Office Center in Southfield.
Great, thank you. And if you could explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Sure. We are asking for a variance to install a temporary real estate sign that would be six-mill perforated window film, would adhere directly to the glass of the building. The reason why we are requesting this is for greater visibility from both 696 and Northwestern, as the building faces south toward those two particular highways. We do have additional leasing signage in and around the building at ground level, but those really serve a greater purpose to the surrounding surface streets and aren't visible to the highways. We are trying to generate additional interest in occupancy in the office building. Currently, in this particular building, 200 Galleria, we are at 0.41 percent occupancy. So we would like to increase that and increase the value.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes. Findings of fact for case 23-06. The appellant, Sarah Toccolino, represents the owner, Galleria Office Center LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: a waiver of temporary wall sign area, 640 square feet proposed, 50 square feet allowed. The property is located on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Cass Avenue and Lockdale Street at 200 Galleria Office Center, Sidwell Parcel, 2417-176008, zoned RC Regional Center. This appeal is to the Chapter 99, Article 4, Section 8.51, Paragraph 1D, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. To the north, the property is zoned RC Regional Center and is occupied by an office building. To the east, the property is zoned RC Regional Center and is occupied by an office building. To the south, across Northwestern Highway, the proposed, the property is zoned RC Regional Center and is occupied by the DPW Service Yard. To the west, the property is zoned RC Regional Center and is occupied by a new car dealer. The subject property is zoned RC Regional Center and is currently occupied by offices. The site has two entrances along the Northwestern Highway Service Drive, one entrance along Cass Avenue, or Case Avenue, and two entrances along the Lockdale Street frontage. A survey of signage at the site reveals the following signs: one conforming garden ground sign, and two illegal temporary signs facing Northwestern Highway.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, unless you have questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
The staff recommendation is for favorable consideration to approve the additional 590 square feet of sign, 640 square feet is proposed, 50 square feet is allowed, as requested with the following conditions: that the appellant secures all the required permits and inspections from the city of Southfield Building Department. The appellant secures the required permits for the two temporary signs facing Northwestern Highway. This recommendation is based on the following: the proposed sign is temporary, the proposed sign is proportionate to the size of the building, and the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment? No? Okay, that sounds good. This is now the public comment opportunity for this case. If you're here to speak to this case, this is your opportunity to step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I have a question. It suggests that, in the findings of fact, that the sign is temporary. Doesn't, it doesn't specify a period. Is, is, is the permit that's going to be granted temporary?
Yes.
What is, so?
And it's a 30-day every three months, every 90 days. They can reapply for a temporary sign, and it's considered a banner, even though it's a seven-mill film that's going to be attached to the, to the building. It's a 30-day temporary sign. They have to renew that permit, and they're allowed to do it every 90 days.
But the waiver we give them is going to be permanent, correct?
It's going to be temporary.
So, what?
Well, we can, we can specify that in the motion, if you'd like, that we would allow it for, it's up to the building official to make a determination on how long it could, it could be up. And that's also in the ordinance.
Okay, and so I'd like to ask you, what is your plan for, for how, how long this, you plan on having these signs up?
Well, we're not opposed to submitting for the permit every 90 days, as you suggest. I, I'm not sure if it would be up for longer than that. It all depends on the generated, generated interest from this particular sign. An additional sign is installed at the West 11 Building also, that is very similar in terms of the materials that we used. So if it...
Yeah, I have, I have no issues with, with the sign, but I, you know, I just don't want to, you know, if you, you need this for temporary purposes, I'd like to put some sort of limit on it. So, you know, I'm inclined to grant it for, you know, whatever reasonable period you guys are asking for, but.
Madam Chair, if I may, address the board. If you use the part of the temporary sign ordinance, which is Article 4, it talks about temporary real estate signs that are rigid. And I'll read it to you. Temporary real estate signs may be permitted for a time period of not to exceed 12 months from a date of permit. An extension period of equal time may be granted by the building official when the sign is demonstrated to be safe and well-maintained. All temporary and real estate signs shall be identified with a temporary sign tag permanently affixed to the said sign.
So it's really up to two years, is what a real estate sign can be up for?
Correct.
And what about this sign here? Is that one of the illegal signs?
That's considered a rigid sign. That's, those two signs are illegal signs that are on the property now. They don't have permits for them.
Can they permit that sign?
They're going to have to permit both signs. They have two signs on the property that we can't find permits for. If they have permits, they need to produce them, and then we will be more than happy to, to move forward. But that was one of the conditions that I specified, that they get permits for the two existing signs.
Okay.
Through the chair to the board, I just would like to add a couple more things from the permitting point. So tonight, we're deciding a variance for the size, and you guys were asking for a timeframe, so it would be maximum one year for the temporary signage. I believe this property, if Wayne can verify for me, is allowed one temporary signage. So if they want all three signs, we would then have to modify the variance request to include two more temporary ground signs.
Agreed.
So, again, as long as we limit it to a period, and it could be two years for, for, you know?
Well, if, if, if I may, address the board through the chair. As per this ordinance, it says we can, we can grant it for up to a year with a year extension, but they would have to come back before the, the board for that extension. Or, I'm sorry, it's up to the building official to grant it for an, an additional year.
That would be for their permit, but for the waiver, if we limited the waiver for two years, the waiver would expire after two years, but they would still need the permit, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But then we also want to amend the
Motion.
Motion to reflect all three signs. That they're going to have three real estate signs on this property, two ground signs and one wall sign.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
And I, I don't have any questions. I just think that it's more appropriate to have at least two years, if they can have two years. I mean, I don't know how long it takes to lease out the rest of your building, but it's not going to take 90 days. It's going to take a lot more than that. So, and what's more is, why, do they have to keep on coming back to renew the permit? If we tell them, if we tell you we'd like to have it for two years, do they have to keep on renewing it every 90 days? Or is that up to you, Wayne?
I'm just going by what, what the ordinance says.
Yeah, so I think the ordinance would require...
Okay, so the ordinance, there's two different things in the ordinance. One is for banners, and this is considered a banner, even though it's a film. The banner says, banner signs shall be permitted only upon, wait, wait, wait. Banner signs may be permitted for a time period of not more than 30 days every three months, expressly subject to subsection C hereof. Subsection C says, banner signs shall be securely attached to the building to which it pertains so as to prevent the sign from being damaged or dislodged from the mounting surface by wind or vandalism. Banner signs may, shall be removed as soon as it becomes torn, faded, or otherwise unsightly as a result of the exposure to the elements. So this is a banner sign. It's not, it's, because it's a film, there, and I spoke to an engineer about this this morning, our third-party engineer, and she says, because it's a film, it's not subject to wind, wind loads or any other thing, other than, than the solar, it may fade in the sun, and, and that may be an issue after two years. So I, I, I don't have any objections to putting a timeframe on it based on a rigid sign, a rigid wall sign, a real estate sign, of, of 12 months with the option of a building official extending it for another 12 months.
All right. Ms. Libbit?
So, I'm looking at this, and we're going to have an amendment, correct?
I think that's likely, yes.
Yes, all right.
Based on, okay, based on our conversations, okay. I, I, I agree with the conversations, and the timeframe was one of my questions. So, Mr. Friedman, do you want to try your hand in motion?
Sure. Do we have a description of the two, two?
All I have are the two pictures that are, the one is a, apparently, I'm going to, I'm going to take a wild stab at 10-by-12-foot sign facing Northwestern, which would be 120 square foot. And the other sign is a double, double-faced sign. Do you have the picture of that? Is a double-faced sign, which is probably four by six on each side, so that's going to be 24 times two is going to be 48. So it'll be a 48-square-foot double-faced sign.
Okay. And those aren't subject to the 50 square feet. That's the banner restriction.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so there's not a size issue with these?
I'm not, I don't have an issue with the size of these signs.
So I don't have to specify the size in the motion, do you think?
No.
Okay. In, in regard to case 23-06, the appellant, Sarah Toccolino, representing the owner's gallery office center, is requesting the following waiver from the board: a waiver of temporary wall sign area, 640 square feet proposed and 50 square feet allowed, and the, a waiver to allow two temporary ground signs that, that are currently on the property. The property is located on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Case Avenue and Lockdale Street at 200 Galleria Office Center, Sidwell Parcel, 2417-176008, zoned RC Regional Center. I move that we grant a waiver of the additional square feet, 590 square feet of, of signs, 640 feet in total, and grant a waiver for two temporary board signs, ground signs. And I recommend that the waiver be, be a temporary waiver of two, two years. I make this recommendation based on the following: the, the, the proposed signs are temporary, the, the banner sign is proportionate to the size of the building, and the proposed signs are keeping in the, with the character and surrounding area, would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay. Are you satisfied? Okay. Anybody have any amendments, or can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, your request is granted. Please work with the city on your permits.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
City of Southfield, boarding zone of appeals, case number 23-08. The appellant, Avery Sign, representing the owner, Southfield Fuel Stop Company, is requesting the following waiver from the board: a variance for a ground support sign in the corner clearance area, a 25-foot high electronic ground support sign, 15-foot permitted, 25-foot proposed, three 13-square-foot full-color electronic changeable copy gas station product signs, zero permitted, three proposed, a setback of 40 feet from a signaled intersection, 50 feet maximum required, or minimum required, 40 feet proposed. The property is located on the east side of Loser Road between Northwestern Highway Civic Center Drive at 26450 Loser Road, Sidwell Parcel, 2422-151007, zoned OS Office Services. This appeal is to Article 7, Section 8.552, and the Article 3, Section 8.50A, Subsections B, D, and K. Article 11, Sections 8.6, signage for special use in B3, Paragraph 1, C, I, subject, or Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi. My name's Jennifer Glover. I'm here representing Avery Sign Company and the station owner at 26450 Loser Road. Our address is 359 Livernoy Street, Ferndale, Michigan, 48220.
Great, thank you. Can you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Sure. As Wayne explained, we are asking to put a new AMICO gas price sign. It is the northeast corner of the property, 25-foot sign with three, or, excuse me, yes, three digital pricers and an electronic message center. The reason that we are here is April 7th of 1971, the station owners, I think it was his father or his grandfather, went to court with the city of Southfield, where they were granted a 17-foot sign along Loser Road, and a 35-foot sign in that northeast corner of the property. When we applied for the permits for the 25-foot sign, this consent judgment came around. There have been many changes to it over the years. We're trying to take that off the table and possibly put everything back into the city of Southfield's hands for the council. By doing so, in a recommendation, we are here in front of you today, asking for this new AMICO sign. I would also like to add that the station owner has spent thousands of dollars to redo that station. It looks fantastic. And we would like to also accommodate the residents of the city of Southfield with the new sign to go along with the new station.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Avery Sign Company, representing the owner, Southfield Fuel Stop Company, is requesting the following waivers from the board: a variance for a ground support sign in the corner clearance area, a 25-foot high electronic ground support sign, 15 feet permitted, 25 feet proposed, three 13-square-foot full-color electronic changeable copy gas station product price signs, zero permitted, three proposed, a setback of 40 feet from the signaled intersection, 50-foot minimum required, 40 feet proposed, change from the legal notice, electronic changeable copy sign on the ground support sign. The property is located on the east side of Loser Road between Northwestern Highway and Civic Center Drive at 26450 Loser Road, Sidwell Parcel, 2422-151007, zoned OS Office Services. This appeal is to the Article 7, Section 8.552, and Article 3, Sections 8.50A, Subsections B, D, and K. Article 11, Section 8.60, signage for special use in B3, Paragraph 1, Subsection C and I, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. To the north, across Northwestern Highway, the property is zoned B3, general business, and is occupied by an affiliated diagnostic center. To the west, across Loser Road, the property is zoned ERO, Educational Research Office, and is occupied by Morelli. To the south, the property is zoned ERO, Educational Research Office, and is developed with a four-story office building. To the east, the property is zoned R2, residential, developed with a church. The subject property is zoned OS, Office Services, and is currently developed with a 7, 1,710-square-foot AMICO gas station and convenience store that is under renovation authorized by building permit PB20-1097. The site has two entrances and exits along Loser Road frontage, two entrances and exits on the Northwestern Highway Service Drive frontage. A survey of signage at the site reveals the following signs: two wall signs on the canopy, 45 square feet in area, for the AMICO gas station on the north and west elevations. The gas station is considered a special use in the zoning district, B3, general business. The gas station is considered a special use in the zoning district, B3, General Business, and is allowed one wall sign per major thoroughfare frontage, including signs placed on, on a canopy which does not exceed two square feet per linear foot of building frontage, or 100 square feet, whichever is less. One ground support or garden ground sign, which shall not exceed an area of 50 square feet. A product sign with a total area of 15 square feet for two product prices, or 20 square feet for three more product, products, for more product prices, and must be attached to either the ground support sign, or garden ground sign, or building, or canopy fascia.
Okay, thank you. That's a lot.
It is, yes ma'am.
Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Just that the station has been there for so many years, and they, they just wanna continue to improve and draw in their customers.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for approval of the waiver for a 25-foot-high electronic ground support sign with three 13.39-square-foot product price signs in the corner clearance area, approved, approval of the 25-foot-high electronic ground support sign with a 40-foot setback from a signaled intersection, and we recommend denial of a 12.37-square-foot electronic changeable copy sign within the proposed ground support sign. The appellant, well, this is based on, with the following conditions, that the appellant secures all required permits for the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based on the following, due to a unique shape and location of the property on which the sign is proposed, strict application of the regulation would result in practical difficulties and undue hardship upon the owner of this, of this property. The proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance, the proposed signs maintain the character of surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. The electronic changeable copy portion of this ground sign will interfere with or be objectional from a standpoint of traffic safety as it is less than 50 foot from a major signalized intersection, as per Section 8.50A, Subsection K.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, sounds good, so, we are now gonna open public comment for this case, 2308. If you are here to speak to this case, now would be your opportunity to step forward. Oh, sure. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Hamadi, and I'm the owner of the gas station at 26450 Lasser Road, and I've been there, I, I bought that station in 1993, so I've been there, and I've been, you know, running that gas station for almost 30 years now. And finally, I was able to, you know, get the finances together and remodel the station and make it beautiful, and we just need the sign to be able to advertise our prices, you know, our gas prices, that's how we do our business. So, I appreciate your help, you know, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
The, the denial of the, the changeable written, is that, is because it's too low to the ground?
No, because it's right on the corner of a major intersection, and would be a complete distraction because it's changeable, and it's going to have messaging on it, that it would be a, objectional from the point of traffic safety, people would be trying to read the sign instead of watching the light.
So, from your pers, from the building department's perspective, they, you just wanna see the numbers of the, the prices, and that's it?
Correct.
What kind of messaging would you put on, on that, below the, the numbers?
It would be advertisements, you know, like coffee 99 cents, or, you know, soft drink 99, just advertisements of specials, things that don't have to do with the gas prices. But if it, if it's something that is granted, we would definitely follow the rules that the city or the guidelines that the city would put down for how often it's allowed to change, how many colors could be on it, you know, what it can or can't say.
I'm not, I'm not in charge of traffic safety, so in this regard, I would go along with what the, what you're recommend, what the building department's recommending. I mean, I understand that you want to advertise that kind of stuff on there, but I don't think that's pertinent to the, the type of sign that you're asking for. You know, the, the prices of the gas is your business, as it was just stated. The amenities that you sell inside the, there as a convenience store, if that's going against safety, that's a different story, so.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
Sure. The, the electronic garden sign that the city is, is recommending and is approving, that would be identical to the, to the board that you have on the taller sign as well, right? It'd just be a second one, you have those kinds of advertisements?
I'm sorry, I didn't, can you repeat that?
This, the city is, is recom, is recommending approval of all your signs except for the garden sign, the electronic copy portion of the garden sign. The, you have a, a, a changeable section on your larger signs as well, is that correct in the?
If I may?
Yeah.
Through the board. No, there, the only copy change, changeable copy sign is gonna be on that ground support sign, there is no garden ground sign at this location.
The, the, but the?
The bottom portion of that sign.
But it's on the, oh, that is also on the corner?
That's the, yes, that's, there's only one sign here that we're talking about, and it's that one in that picture up on the screen?
Okay.
That it talks about, that bottom portion is going to be just for advertising, which will be changing and be multicolored and be, have different messages on it, and if I may, I can read the, what it says about that. Such sign shall not, such signs shall not be located within 250 feet of the top 50 intersections as defined by Simcoch High Frequency Crash Locations Data for the most recent five-year period by Oakland County Ranking. Such signals shall not be located along 50 feet of a driving service of a signalized intersection. The 50-foot shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the sign to the nearest point of the driving surface of the signalized intersection.
So that would be, that would be 50 feet, so there are presumably locations on this, this thing where they could put a sign if it was close to the street but farther from the intersection, and not run afoul of?
Correct.
Of that, of that ordinance? So again, you know, I, again, I would go along with the city's recommendation, you know, I don't wanna approve something that's contrary to public safety, so we, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I would just like to add one thing, and I, if you'll indulge me for one moment, I just wanna say hello to a couple of people watching, Rosie and Mikey, time to go to bed.
Okay, Ms. Libbit?
I'm going, going to have to agree, the safety is very important, so.
So my question is, you know, the current sign is about 16 feet, right, tall, and with this changeable copy that it doesn't sound like they're support for, would you reduce the height of the sign from 25 feet, or would you still want 25 feet even without the changeable copy?
They're gonna still want the 25 feet.
Okay.
We've taken down that 15-foot sign already, that's gone.
Okay, so would that area then be open, just kind of on the legs of the sign?
Yes, that would give you a much larger under clearance, which then promotes a better safety in that area, because you can see pedestrians and oncoming and traffic and all that.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
The sign being on the columns, does not, there, it's in the 25-foot clearance for a corner sign, corner clearance, but with the two poles, and that being open, there's really no danger to anybody coming up to that intersection because the one side is one-way, the service drive is only one-way. So the only time it would be a problem is if you were looking to the left for oncoming traffic, so it wouldn't be a visual block at all for that 25.
My question was more if they needed 25 feet still, or if they could, wanted to bring it down, that was really what my question was. Okay, um, let's see, who's up? Mr. Friedman, wanna make the motion?
Sure. In regard to case 23-08, the appellate, Avery Sign Company, representing the owner, Southfield Fuel Stop Company, is requesting the following waiver from the board, a variance for a ground support sign in the corner clearance area, 25, five, for a 25-foot-high electronic ground support sign, 15 feet permitted, 25 feet proposed, three 13-square-foot full-color electronic changeable copy gas station product price signs, zero permitted, three proposed. And the property is located on the east side of Lasher Drive between Northwestern Highway and Civic Center Drive at 26450 Lasher Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2422-151007. I move that we approve the waiver for a 25-foot-high electronic ground support sign with three 13.39-square-foot product price signs in the quarter clearance, in the corner clearance area, and a denial of a 12.37-square-foot electronic changeable copy sign in the, within the proposed ground support sign. And that, I make this recommendation due to the unique shape of the location of the property which the sign is proposed, strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties or undue hardship upon the owner of the property, and that the proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance, and that the proposed signs maintain character of surrounding area, would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and, and that, that a changeable copy portion of a sign in that area would be objectionable from a standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, I, if I, I'm sorry, I do have one question. Generally, when we've approved changeable signs, it's like restricted to one color? Because I, in the, in the beginning, it said full color signs, do, there's no, there's no restriction here to color, is that part of the permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the chair to the board.
Yes.
Could you just add to the motion number four about being in, at the setback of 40 feet from a signalized intersection?
Forty feet, that's great.
I would like to amend my motion to state that, that we're asking for approval of a 25-foot-high electronic ground support sign within the 40-foot setback from a signaled intersection.
Thank you, and do you still second that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Your request is granted, please work with the city on your permits.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your time. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, the city call the next case, please.
Case number 23-10, the appellant, Expedite the Deal LLC, representing A&amp;S Properties, is requesting the following from the board, a variance for three wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero permitted, three proposed, a variance for a ground support sign, which is a garden ground sign in the corner clearance area. The property is located on the north side of West 12-Mile Road between Fairfax Street and Marshall Street at 15840 West 12-Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2412-478-038, Zone B3, General Business. This appeal is to Section 8.59, 1A and B, Article 11, and Sections 8.36, Article 3, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm Pete Hatcher here, representing Walgreens at 15815 West 12-Mile Road. Walgreens Sign A is 99.8 square foot, that's a code-allowed sign. Walgreens Sign B, on the east elevation, is 99.8 square foot, this elevation houses the primary entrance, this sign requires a variance. Walgreens Sign C, on the west elevation, is 74.88 square foot, this requires a variance. Walgreens Sign D, pharmacy sign, is also on the west elevation, and that's 10.5 square foot, that requires a variance as well. And Sign I is a monument sign at 16.5 square feet and 5-foot height, and those are co-compliant. All the wall signs are internally illuminated with diffused LED lighting, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair to the board. Could we ask the appellant to state his name again?
Oh, you didn't catch it?
Could you please state your name again?
Your, your name, please?
Pete Hatcher.
And who are you with?
With Expedite the Deal.
You said with Walgreens?
Expedite the Deal is the company I work for, and I am representing Walgreens and A&amp;S Properties.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, will we read the findings effect, please?
Yes, ma'am. The appellant, Expedite the Deal LLC, representing A&amp;S Properties, is requesting the following from the board, a variance for three wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero permitted, three proposed, a variance for a garden ground sign in the corner clearance area. The property is located on the north side of West 12-Mile Road between Fairfax Street and Marshall Street at 15840 West 12-Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2412-478-038, Zone B3, General Business. This appeal is to Section 8.59, 1A and B, Article 11, and Section 8.36, Article 3, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. To the north, the property is Zoned RA, Residential, and is occupied by single-family homes. To the east, across Marshall Street, is Zoned OS Office Services, occupied by a daycare. To the south, across 12-Mile Road, property is Zoned OS Office Services, and is occupied by offices. To the west, the property is Zoned OS Offices and Services, and occupied by offices. The subject property is Zone B3, General Business, is currently under construction for a Walgreens permit, number PB21-1593. The site has one entrance and exit along West 12-Mile Road, and one entrance and exit along Marshall Street, and one entrance and exit along Fairfax Street. The appellant proposes to install three wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero permitted, three proposed, and a garden ground sign in the corner clearance area.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to add that the, the wall signs are needed as the property does from three streets, these are for the public to identify this location at posted speed limits for public safety and accident prevention. This helps avoid drivers stopping short to turn. Not all customers will be from the area or even live in the city. Regarding the pharmacy sign, this is located right where the pharmacy is located inside the building, and in case of emergency, the public, police, EMS, need to know where the pharmacy is in the building, and these signs will not have any negative impact on the community.
Okay, thank you.
And also, one other, one last thing, is that these are internally illuminated, diffused LED lighting, so they don't, don't cast any glare at all, all the lighting stays at the face of the sign.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendations for favorable consideration for three wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare and to deny a garden ground sign in the restricted corner clearance area. This recommendation is based on the following, due to the unique layout and size of the property on which the three wall signs are proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to and undue hardship upon the owner of this property. The three proposed wall signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance, that the three proposed wall signs, in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon the adjacent or surrounding properties. The proposed garden ground sign will interfere with or be objectional from a standpoint of traffic and pedestrian safety.
Okay, thank you. Anything you'd like to add at this point, before public comment?
Just that I don't feel that the ground sign would cause any kind of traffic issues.
Okay, um, okay, so we will open this up to public comment. If you are here to speak to this case, now would be your opportunity to step forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Libbit?
I do have a question, I am kind of familiar, very familiar with that, this area, and so can you give us a little bit more of why you think that garden sign will interfere with the traffic and the pedestrian and the mobile traffic?
In the ordinance, if I may, through the board, or through the chair to the board, in the ordinance, it talks about, we have a 25-foot setback triangle, so to speak, for visual clearance for any signs are not allowed in that 25-foot triangle. Their sign is right on the, near the sidewalk and on both sides of the corner. Their sign is right on the, near the sidewalk and on both sides of the corner, which would be a visual block for pedestrians and people trying to pull out onto 12-Mile from that side street.
And so H is like a, like kind of a short directional sign, right?
No, it'd be I, over on the corner.
Right, no, H, but H is just like a small directional sign.
Yeah, that's correct. It's just a four-foot-high directional sign.
Okay, and then I is the one that's kind of a more monumental sign.
I would be the garden ground sign, which you can see, the way they show it, is right on the sidewalk. So I'm not sure exactly where they're going to place it, but where they showed it to us on the plan, it's, you know, it's on the sidewalk, so it's going to be a visual block to anybody coming down that street and trying to turn out onto, looking for oncoming traffic on 12-Mile, that's going to be a problem, and of course, it's a problem for pedestrian traffic as well.
Okay.
I, I appreciate your explanation, and I know that to be true. 12-Mile can get really busy, and trying to see around those two areas would be very difficult with a sign there.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
I remember when they came here, it was a couple few years ago, and there was residents that came here, and they were very upset that Walgreens was going to build a building there. What I don't want to do is complicate that. There's enough signage that we would be granting on the building itself. This corner ground, this obstruction, I, I believe, I would agree with the recommendation from the city. You can go over there yourself and see that if it was, it would be in your eyesight line to turn right or to come in, you know, if you're a pedestrian ever. Somebody's going to, somebody's going to get hurt at some point in time, and I don't know if you need that many signs. This building is not that large, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I, while I, while I don't necessarily, well, I do agree with the city that the way that this, this, this garden sign is located on the plans especially, it could be a hazard. I would say that I would approve a garden sign, probably of the same size, if it was in a slightly different location. But as this, as this waiver is granted, I'd approve the, the three signs that the city has recommended and not approve the one that, that, the particular one you've, you've asked for here. Again, as, as the city pointed out, it's, it's in the, it's in the sidewalk, it's sticking all the way out there. If it was, if it was a little farther back, if it was, you know, perhaps you could do something with the parking lot and angle it so that, that it was, it was on an angle, and that way you'd get, you know, I know you're, you're really only looking for 12-Mile and that.
Is that something we could work with, work with you on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would we, I mean, let me, just, just for talking sake, would we want to approve it if it's not in a corner clearance?
I, well, I, I think we, he, they would need to come back with a, with a request. But I, I think we would approve, there, you know, if you work with the city, I think there are a lot of things that we would approve there, but not this particular one.
Madam Chair, if I may address the board?
Yes.
Well, we're more than willing to work with this applicant on the location of this sign, but either way, it's probably going to have to come back before the board with a precise location that we can testify, and we would have to see some clear and concise site plans on how it's going to be located, and then we would make a recommendation based on that. But until we see that, we can't, there's not much we can do.
Yep. Okay. Anything you'd like to add?
If, if it is, if it was to be out of the clearance, then it would have just needed a permit and not a hearing at all? Okay, okay.
Okay, all right, so, um, let's see, Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion?
Sure. In regard to ZBA case 23-10, the appellant, Expedite the Deal LLC, representing A&amp;S Properties, is requesting the following from the board: One, a variance for three wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero permitted, three proposed; two, a variance for a garden ground sign in the corner clearance area. The property is located on the north side of West 12-Mile Road between Fairfax Street and Marshall Street at 15840 West 12-Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 24-12-478-038, Zone B3, general business. I make a motion for, to approve the variance for the three wall signs not facing the major thoroughfare and denying the variance for the garden ground sign in the corner clearance area. I'm making this based on the following: Due to the unique layout and size of the, of this property on which the three wall signs are proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to and undue hardship upon the owner of this property. The three proposed wall signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance, that the three proposed wall signs, in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon the adjacent or surrounding properties. And lastly, the proposed garden ground will interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic and pedestrian safety.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, your request is granted. Then work with the city on your permits, please.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you very much. Will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case number 22-40, the appellant Evans Bantios, of Oakland County, owner, project manager, is requesting the following variance from the board: Fencing within the front yard setback, installation of barbed wire in a property zoned IL light industrial, installation of barbed wire on the fence less than seven feet in height, seven feet required, six feet proposed, two feet of fence height for proposed generator fencing, six foot permitted, eight foot proposed. The property is located on the north side of Eight Mile, Eight Mile Road between Berg and Lasser Roads at 22430 West Eight Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2433-452032, zoned IL industrial. This appeal is to Section 5.37-1C, Article 4, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi.
Hello.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Name is Evans Bantios. I'm with Oakland County WRC. The address is 22430 West Eight Mile Road.
Great, thank you. And if you're going to speak, if you could just state your name and address for the record, too, please?
I'm Joseph Seiwick. I'm with Fishbeck. I'm a design engineer, and it's 2201 Commonwealth Boulevard, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Great, thank you. And if you could explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
So we are asking for, in order, a variation on the height of the fencing to match the existing fencing that is out at the site. That's pretty much the extent of it. The current fence is six-foot, black vinyl coated with a two-foot of barbed wire, and we just want to match that with the new fencing we're putting in as part of this project.
Okay. Will the city read the findings effect, please?
For ZBA case 22-40, the appellant Evans Bantios, of Oakland County, owner, project manager, is requesting the following variances from the board: Fencing within the front yard setback, installation of barbed wire on a property zoned IL light industrial, installation of barbed wire on a fence less than seven feet in height, seven feet required and six feet proposed. I'm sorry, it should be, yeah, seven feet. Two feet of fence height for proposed generator fencing, six feet permitted, eight feet proposed. Property is located on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Berg and Lasser Roads at 22430 West Eight Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2433-452032, zoned IL light industrial. The subject property is developed with a utility building and pump station for the Oakland County water maintenance. Property to the north and west is zoned IL light industrial and is developed with Sam's Club. Property to the east is zoned I1 industrial and is developed with Eagle Landscaping. The properties to the south, within the city of Detroit, are zoned B4 commercial and are developed with the West Oak Senior Care and Rehab Facility and the DMC Woodland Medical Plaza. The site contains 1.11 acres of land with 316.55 feet of frontage on Eight Mile Road and a depth of approximately 166.77 feet. The approved site plan indicates sanitary pump station improvements, which include a new generator and pad enclosed by an eight-foot-high fence and barbed wire, expansion of the existing six-foot-high fencing along the Eight Mile Road frontage with barbed wire, rooftop equipment, ground equipment, bike rack, parking lot restriping, barrier-free compliance, sidewalk revisions and landscaping. Although it will be difficult to see from the Eight Mile Road frontage, the generator and fence enclosure behind the parking lot will be screened with 48 new compact burning bush to further soften the view. Current zoning ordinance requirements permit barbed wire within the I1 industrial zoning district only and on fencing at least seven feet in height. The facility provides service to 15 communities located within the Evergreen Farmington Sewage Disposal System. Oakland County has stressed the importance of site security and privacy regarding facility operations as well as deterring trespassers, which is why the barbed wire, front yard fencing, and higher fencing around the generator with barbed wire is desired. Existing and proposed six-foot fencing on site has barbed wire. ZBA case 18-28 granted variances to permit fencing in the front yard, fence height of seven feet, and to permit powder-coated fence slats for the subject property. ZBA case 2101 granted additional variances of fencing in the front yard, barbed wire usage in the IL light industrial district, and fence height on February 16th, 2021. Zoning Board of Appeals has also granted variances of fencing height and/or barbed wire for other similar public utility uses elsewhere in the city. Variances of fencing within the front yard, two feet of fence height, and use of barbed wire on non-industrial zone property were granted for the Great Lakes Water Authority property located at 20920 East Street as part of ZBA case 20-17, approved on November 17th, 2020. Two feet of fence height was granted for the Verizon Wireless property located at 24242 Northwestern Highway as part of ZBA case 2231, granted on November 15th, 2022. Both of these cases were similar situations due to the need for increased security for public utility uses.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Nope.
Okay. Will you read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variances as requested based upon the following: Site security, including fencing in the front yard, barbed wire, and fence height, is essential for both the site and backup generator because the site functions as a public utility where uninterrupted service is imperative. Facility provides service to 15 area communities, 15, I'm sorry, fencing within the front yard with barbed wire will not be obtrusive nor will be the, will be injurious to surrounding properties due to the industrial, commercial nature of the area and the location fronting fast-moving traffic along Eight Mile Road. In addition, the new fencing will replace and/or tie in to existing front yard fencing with barbed wire, which has existed on site since at least 2007, which does predate our fence ordinance. Fence height variances, fencing in the front yard, and use of barbed wire on non-industrial zone property and on fencing under seven feet have been granted by the ZBA for similar public utility properties within the city as well as on the subject property.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything to add before we open public comment?
Nope.
Okay. So we've opened public comment on this case. If you're here to speak on this case, now is your opportunity, and seeing none, we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I don't either.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I don't have any problem with it.
All right, I agree. Ms. Libbit, will you make a motion for us?
Regarding zoning board appeals case number 2240, the appellant Evans Bantios, of Oakland County, owner, project manager, is requesting the following variances from the board: Fencing within the front yard setback, installation of barbed wire on a property zoned IL, that's light industrial, installation of barbed wire on a fence less than seven feet in height, seven feet required, six feet proposed, two feet of fence height for proposed generator fencing, six feet permitted, eight feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Berg and Lasser Roads at 22430 West Eight Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 2433-452-032, zoned IL light I move to approve the variances requested based on the following: Site security, including fencing in the front yard, barbed wire, and fence height, is essential for both the site and the backup generator because the site functions as a public utility where uninterrupted service is imperative. The facility provides service to 15 area communities. Fencing within the front yard with barbed wire will not be obtrusive nor will it be injurious to surrounding properties due to the industrial, commercial nature of the area and the location fronting fast-moving traffic alone, along Eight Mile Road. In addition, the new fencing will replace and/or tie in to the existing front yard fencing with the barbed wire, which has existed since at least 2007. And finally, fence height variances, fencing in the front yard, and use of barbed wire on non-industrial zone property and on the fencing under 70 foot, seven feet, pardon me, have been granted by the ZBA for similar public utility properties within the city as well as on the subject property, and I so move.
All right, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, will the city call the last case, please?
Appellant, Sherry Levy of Lasser Road, Mchva Incorporated, owner, is requesting the following from the board. Case number 2305, the appellant, Sherry Levy, and Lasser Road, Mchva Incorporated, owner, is requesting the following from the board: A variance of 21 feet of landscaping on the west side of the site, 25 feet required, four foot average proposed; a variance of five foot of landscaping on the north side of the site, 25 feet required, 20 feet proposed; a variance of 11 feet 8 inches of east side building setback, 50 foot required, 38 feet 4 inches proposed; a variance of 32 feet of north side building setback, 50 feet required, 18 feet proposed; a variance to permit a six-foot-high vinyl fence in lieu of the required masonry wall. The property is located at the northeast corner of 11 Mile and Bell Roads, Sidwell Parcel 2416-453015, 22960 West 11 Mile Road, zoned R4, single-family residential. This appeal is to Section 5.62-B, Subsection 4, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Alex Lancina. I'm from Trademark. I'm the builder. It's 29424 Wood Park Circle, Warren, Michigan.
Great, and?
I am Sherry Levy. I live at 22334 Chatsford Circuit, Southfield, Michigan.
Great, thank you. So if you could explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Well, I guess the big thing, I wasn't here back when they started this, back in 2019. They did have all of this approved. I did go back to the architects and made sure that nothing has changed on the drawings from 2019, so this, they've already been through all of this. Just they, you know, COVID happened, stuff like that, but did you have any specific questions with like the layout or?
No, just, I have to ask you the question.
Gotcha.
Okay, will the city read the findings effect, please?
For ZBA case 23-0005, the appellant, Sherry Levy, of Lasser Road, Mchva Incorporated, owner, is requesting the following from the board: A variance of 21 feet of landscaping on the west side of the site, 25 feet required, four feet average proposed; a variance of five feet of landscaping on the north side of the site, 25 feet required, 20 feet proposed; a variance of 11 feet 8 inches of east side building setback, 50 feet required, 38 feet 4 inches proposed; a variance of 32 feet of north side building setback, 50 feet required, 18 feet proposed; and a variance to permit a six-foot-high vinyl fence in lieu of the required masonry wall. Property is located at the northeast corner of 11 Mile and Bell Roads, Sidwell Parcel 2416-453015, located at 22960 West 11 Mile Road, zoned R4, single-family residential. The subject property is developed with a former single-family home rezoned and approved for a Mchva ritual bath for religious use on August 12th, 2019. The properties to the north and east are zoned RT attached, single-family, and are developed with single-family homes fronting Bell and 11 Mile Roads respectively. The property to the south, across 11 Mile Road, is zoned OS office service and is developed with a cell tower and associated equipment. The property to the west, across Bell Road, is zoned R4, single-family residential, and is developed with the Sherrisettic Congregation Synagogue. The site contains 0.49 acres of land- The site contains .49 acres of land with 114.85 feet of frontage on 11 Mile Road and a depth of approximately 174 feet along Bell Road. The property was rezoned from RT Attached Single Family Residential to R4 Single Family Residential and granted special land use approval on August 12th, 2019 to allow the religious use within the single-family zone. The approved site plan, approved on August 12th, 2019, indicates the demolition of the existing single-family home, which was completed in July 2021, and the construction of a 1,400-square-foot McVah with associated parking. On February 27th, 2023, City Council, Southfield City Council, approved an extension of the site plan approval to February 27th, 2024. The landscape variances and building setback variances are needed to satisfy parking and stormwater detention requirements on the relatively small lot. The south edge of the proposed building, including the future addition, will be in line with the existing residential home to the east fronting 11 Mile Road. If this were a new single-family home fronting Bell Road, the proposed building setbacks would meet zoning ordinance requirements. Portion of the existing landscape area where abutting Bell Road must be eliminated to provide required off-street parking while providing minimum driveway widths and maintaining room for stormwater detention. 15 feet of landscaping exists between the curb line of Bell Road and the western property line within the city's Bell Road right-of-way. A six-foot-high masonry wall is required along the north and east property lines where abutting single-family residential use. Petitioner wishes to maintain the existing six-foot-high vinyl fence that was constructed based on historical aerial photographs sometime between 2012 and 2014. The approved landscape plan indicates the removal of two box elders in poor condition as recommended by the city landscape design coordinator, retention of three box elders and one walnut tree at the north end of the property, retention of a large spruce at the southwest corner of the property, and the addition of one deciduous tree, 47 deciduous shrubs, 33 evergreen shrubs, ornamental grasses and perennial beds. ZBA case 19-0021, for all the same variances requested tonight, was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals on September 17th, 2019. Based on the Zoning Board of Appeals rules of procedure, because a building permit for the new structure was not obtained within 18 months before March 17th, 2021, the previously obtained variances are now null and void and no longer valid. Material facts pertaining to the current request for variances have remained unchanged from the previous original approval.
Great, thank you. Anything you'd like to add to that?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Will you read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve based upon the following findings. The east and north side yard building setback variances requested will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the proposed structure and future addition will be in line with the existing home to the east. Additionally, the existing six-foot-high vinyl fence and tree line to the north and the existing fence to the east with large rain garden will provide adequate buffer from the residents to the east. The existing vinyl fence has provided adequate buffer to the site for at least eight years. Increasing the landscaping along Bell Road would shift the entire development further east toward the adjacent homes, minimizing the buffer and decreasing the area needed for required stormwater detention. The site is unique in that there is a significant 15-foot landscape strip within the Bell Road right-of-way, which provides adequate buffer from traffic on Bell Road. The proposed landscape plan indicates compliance with the city ordinances pertaining to tree removal and required landscape area on the overall site and will also provide curb appeal. Variance for landscaping abutting a street will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties and is in character with the zoning ordinance, and that the transitional nature of the area is maintained even with the deficiency in landscaping abutting the street. The property is situated on a highly trafficked intersection, and the use and proposed layout provides proper transition between the synagogue to the west, cell towers to the south, and residential properties to the north and east. On February 27th, 2023, City Council approved an extension of the site plan to February 27th, 2024, and the variances were already granted as part of ZBA case 1921 on September 17th, 2019, but have since expired because permits were not obtained within 18 months of approval. Material facts presented remain unchanged since the original approval.
Okay, thank you. Anything you'd like to add before we open public comment?
No.
Okay, all right, so we will open public comment for this case. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, now is your opportunity to step forward. Okay, so seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Libbit?
I have no issue with it.
Okay, Mr. Rogers?
I have no issues.
Mr. Friedman?
No issues.
Me either. All right, who wants to make the long motion?
I could do it.
Okay, thank you.
In regard to case number 23-05, the appellant Sherri Levy of Lasser Road McVah, owner, is requesting the following from the board. A variance of 21 feet of landscaping on the west side of the site, 25 feet required, four foot average proposed. A variance of five foot landscaping in the north of the site, 25 feet required, 20 feet proposed. A variance of 11 feet 8 inches of east side building setback, 50 feet required, 38 feet 4 inches proposed. A variance of 32 feet on the north side of the building setback, 50 feet required, 18 feet proposed. A variance and a variance to permit a six-foot-high vinyl fence in lieu of the required masonry wall. The property is located in the northeast corner of 11 Mile and Bell Roads, Sidwell Parcel 2416453015, at 22960 West 11 Mile Road, Zoned R4 Single Family Residential. I recommend that we approve all the requested waivers for the following reasons. The east and north side yard building setback variances requested are going to have a minimal adverse effect on the surrounding properties. And additionally, the six-foot vinyl fence and tree line to the north and the existing fence to the east with a large rain garden will provide an adequate buffer for the residents to the east, and the existing vinyl fence has been an adequate buffer to the site for at least eight years. And that increasing landscaping along Bell Road would shift the entire development further east toward adjacent homes, minimizing the buffer, decreasing the area needed for required stormwater detention. And that the site is unique in that there is a 15-foot landscape strip within Bell Road, within the Bell Road right-of-way, which provides an adequate buffer from the traffic on Bell Road. And that the proposed landscape plan indicates a compliance with city ordinance pertaining to tree removal and general landscaping. And the variance for landscaping abutting the street will have minimal adverse effects on surrounding properties and is in character with, with the zoning ordinance in that the transitional nature of the area is maintained even with the deficiency of landscaping abutting the street. And, and also for the same reasons that we granted the waiver in 2019.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Your request is granted. Just try to get your permit within 18 months, please. All right, thank you. Okay, so that closes our public hearing and moves us to approval of minutes from September 13th, which seems so long ago. Anybody have any changes or corrections?
Move approval of the minutes of September 13th, 2022, as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, looks like our next case is April 4th. We have two cases. Anything to say there? Looks like a fence case and a accessory structure case. Okay. Anybody have any miscellaneous? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please. Can I have a second? And we are adjourned.